...of the May 28th, Board Meeting of the Springfield Education Association. Would you please call the roll?
Regano, Patoni, Malone, Anderson, Stukey.
Would you please join me in standing and pledging allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Before we proceed, I'd like to just vary a little bit and make an announcement that some of you may know, some of you may not know, that Mr. Anderson is not here tonight due to an untimely death in his family. His sister-in-law was killed in a freak car accident yesterday. And so I'd like for you to do if you will, is to join me in a moment of silence to remember he and his family. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda? Some move. Is there a second? Second. So would you call the roll, please?
Regano?
Yes.
Malone?
Yes.
Stukey?
Yes. The motion passes. Next is an approval of the May 12th regular meeting minutes. Is there a motion to approve? Some move. Is there a second? Second. Is there any discussion? If not, a roll call, please.
Regano?
Yes.
Malone?
Yes.
Stukey?
Yes. The motion passes. Next, public participation and introduction of guests. Springfield Education Association, is there an individual to speak or give a report? Okay. Classified, Springfield classified employees, is there a representative or a person who would like to speak? Public participation, the free arrange. No one has requested to speak, so we'll move on to 2.4. Mr. Martin, would you please like to share the information regarding our early graduates?
Yes, we have three early graduates this year. We have two with us this evening, Ally Watson and Emma Morris, and Bryce Anderson is a third, but he is not with us this evening. I did talk to both girls today, just to kind of get a little bit of, so I can say something about them, and let you know who they are as students. This is all good, trust me. Ally, do you want to come up first?
Oh, I'd like to invite somebody.
Ally is going to be attending Reed College, which is in Portland, Oregon, which is considered to be one of the most intellectual colleges in the nation. She's going to be majoring in linguistics. 2014 Princeton Review received a score of number one for best classical experience out of all colleges in the United States. Wow. Ally is currently taking five AP courses, is that correct? So she's taking...
I'm surprised you had time to come to the committee.
AP US4, AP Stats, AP Calc, AP Physics, AP Government. So she has been very busy this school year. So we would like to congratulate Ally on all of her accomplishments and good luck next year. Next one is Emma Morris. Emma's going to be attending Rose Coleman Institute of Technology, which just came out a couple of months ago, to be the number one institute of technology in the world by U.S. university reports for engineering. She's going to be studying electrical engineering. And as some of you might not know, Emma is currently 14 years old, so she'll be turning 15 end of June. So she is a very early graduate, and she is also taking multiple AP courses as well. So she has been very busy. So congratulations, Emma. And our other early graduate is Bryce Anderson, he's not with us, but he is also, don't know exactly where he's going yet, but he is taking AP courses at the high school, he is also a PSCO student. He's taking college of course at Springfield.
Let's get a picture. Board members, people come on.
I think if they have a teacher here, the teacher should be in the picture.
Oh, yeah. Come on up.
Tara stands next to him, I won't know if she's a student. She's so young.
That's a nice picture. What does that say about...
Congratulations.
Bravo.
Congratulations, parents. Thank you. It is an incredible feat to graduate early, just because of the demands, any more education, and what this has shown, which Martin indicated, is you have people who not only did well, did exceptionally, but did it with a pretty well, probably full load every year of high school. And sometimes the students will work hard the first few years, having a full schedule, and the last two, they tend to sometimes get involved in other activities and not take the same academic load. So again, graduations, ladies. I think the colleges that you're going to are very fortunate to have you. Moving on, tray justice report.
This is an official briefing, April 2015 financial statements I presented. There is nothing on the line, everything was, when I was presenting the five-year forecast a couple of weeks ago, I had kind of given a board a brief, the spiritual only board is called an equal, and they were ready to see the spectrum for equal, so we were ready online with the new revised by...
Is there a motion to approve the April financials? Some move. It's moved, is there a second? Second. It's been seconded. Discussion?
Actually, I would like to give you guys a little bit of an update that's happened since I presented the five-year forecast. We have received some information from the state, and now I've been working with the county auditor, that the pipeline that we're expecting to be getting money in on here in this next fiscal year, that the ATEX Enterprise, which is the company that is running and owns this pipeline, is saying it's not taxable. Because what they're running through the line is not actually gas, it's ethane, which is an ingredient of gas, but it's not actually natural gas. So after the last week and a half of trying to get as much information as I can, it looks like we're going to have to move forward with our legislatures to try to get them to change their current law, so that we can actually get revenue on this now. So what I have done is pushed it back another year, based off of the information that we have, it's going to probably take us a little longer to get the law changed in order for us to be able to start getting in the revenue, and just so that we make sure we plan for the future, I went ahead and pushed it back one year. So there is a reduction now in the forecast that's posted by about $810,000 over the next year, to show that reduction in pipeline. Everything else is the same as that I presented to you a couple of weeks ago.
Tara, the figure of $800,000 over how long?
It will be, it's a reduction in half of the fiscal '16 revenue, and the other half of that is in the fiscal '17 revenue, because it pushes it back one full tax year, which interrupts two fiscal years.
So in essence, correct me if I'm wrong, we're talking about a potential reduction of about $800,000 per fiscal year for a budget until this is resolved. Tara, if legislature does change the law, is it going to affect them or their grandfather then?
It's not grandfathered in, that's why we're hoping, this affects 13 counties in our state, and so obviously there's a lot of districts within those counties that are going to be affected by this, so it will most likely end up being a class action for us all together to go to the state and try to get this. So we're hoping it will happen rather fast, but then we're not sure how long it'll be tied up in legals, you know, we're not sure. So that's why I pushed it out a whole nother year, just to be safe, so I can give updates if it's looking like we might get that in sooner. We have an October revision, and then another May revision, the next May. So I have two other chances that I can revise the forecast if we're going to appear to get that money in sooner than we thought.
Now, one thing, though, correct me if I'm wrong, they wouldn't have to do it in back then, because the law...
No. Yes, yes, it would just go from...
Yeah, let me chime in on that if I may, because I did a little bit of research on it myself. Natural gas is not just a pure substance, it's a natural gas, and it's composed of several components, some methane, mostly methane, some ethane, and some other major gases. The tax code defines natural gas in a broad way, and so I don't really think this is going to be so much an issue for the legislature as it is a matter of enforcing the tax code as it's written. Because the tax code describes natural gas and its constituents, and so it's broad enough, and I think, I agree with what you're doing, postponing the inclusion of revenue while this thing is being fought out. Unfortunately, it's like if their position is, ethane is not a natural gas, then we're going to have to litigate what a natural gas is.
Well, it actually does, I don't know if you saw the ORC, but I did pull the ORC under the public utility, because I was trying to get the definition myself, and it actually specifically does say that ethane is a natural gas liquid, and that's what they're saying is running through the lines, and it says, "Natural gas liquid is not taxable." That's what the current law does state.
I read that section, and it defines natural gas for that section alone. It says, "Natural gas," or whatever it is, "as defined for this section."
Then it says, "But not..."
That is not, that is not the tax code. The tax code has another definition, and it's in a whole nother section of my laws. But be that as it may, I think that you're doing the right thing. I think it gets resolved through litigation, probably not through the legislature, I don't think there is a change in the law that's necessary.
We're going to get the legislation...
I guess, but not even, but, you know, and if litigation is successful, I would think that they would be liable for taxes, as opposed to if it's found that it's not in the law, then, you know, obviously they could change the law and then tax them, but that's not what we're trying to make. So I guess, I hope that while it's unfortunate we have to litigate, natural gas is natural gas, whether you compress it and liquefy it, or whether you don't compress and liquefy it, and it'll end up being, I guess, a scientific argument that gets made, but I think that the court is going to have to hear it and decide it, or the Department of Taxation, hopefully we can persuade them to send them a bill.
What I did do is, because I talked to Jason Mama, which is at the High Department of Taxation, and it is their position, that the current tax law, he said to me over the phone, the current tax law does say that it is not, that natural gas liquid is not taxable. He said that currently the only tax that we could impose under law, under code, is commercial activity tax, which goes to state. So we have meetings set up with our county auditor, and then several other county auditors this week and next week, and we're also going to try to get our local legislators to meet with us next week, when they're meeting with other legislators in other regions of the state. So we're going to try our best to get something together to present...
You know, I think it's worth, I think it's certainly worth pursuing, especially if you have multiple school districts that will help us litigate it, because when it came out of the ground, it's gas, okay? The fact that they processed and turned it into a liquid, I don't think I would change the fact that it was gas, and it's being transmitted over the state of Ohio, so today...
And I do agree, and I think that even bigger issue we're going to have is we receive approximately $2 million from our current pipeline that is running through our district that they are paying taxes on, and so our concern is, are they going to try to follow suit? And that is a concern for a lot of districts that are benefiting from that. So it could potentially be a lot more than just the second pipeline revenue that we're, you know, eventually, if we follow suit. So we definitely want to get the law changed, or get an interpretation that's a taxable one.
I guess one other comment I have on the forecast, I would be remiss not mentioning yet, having, one of my concerns with the forecast has been the amount of spending that's been in the forecast, and I would be remiss not to mention that we have taken some steps to contain that, and so I appreciate that, I think we need to still, quite a few more that we're looking at.
I did want to briefly, I did want to briefly hit on a couple of things real quick, on the school fees and the parking passes. In the past, our school fees were separated into a separate account, we called it an 009 account, it was a separate fund, to where we would receive a list from the buildings of every supply they were going to buy for the year, and then the school fees would go to pay those exact supplies. And then what would happen is, is the general fund would have to move money over into the 009 fund, because not everybody paid their school fees, or if you were on free and reduced lunch, you didn't have to pay your school fees. So it was a lot of transactions going back and forth between the two funds, trying to cover all of the school fees expenses. So what I did when I got here is I moved the, I collapsed the 009s, we spent them out, and set up school fees in the general fund. And I guess there may have been some curiosity about, how do we know that that's not getting lost in the general fund with everything else, and to make sure that the money that's being paid for school fees is actually going to those school fees. And so I just wanted to make sure that everyone understood that what was happening in the past is we had to transfer money from the general fund into the school fees account, because we were spending a lot more on the school fees than we were actually charging back to parents. So basically, the general fund, the school fees that are paid by parents just offset the total cost of the school fees that are purchased for student use. So it's always going to be a lot larger of a fee than the general fund is already paying towards those school fees. I just didn't want, I wanted to put everyone at ease to know that just because it's in the general fund doesn't mean the money's getting lost. We are actually spending the money on the school supplies for the kids, and then some, the general fund is subsidizing the rest of the costs of those fees as well. And same thing with the parking passes, we spend, I would like to throw out a guess, but maybe $30,000 a year or so in just salt for the parking lots. So when we're increasing our parking pass fees, we wanted you to know that the parking pass money that is being paid by students does go to upkeep those parking lots, and the cost is far beyond anything we could ever charge. So the cost of the increase is just because we haven't increased the parking pass fees in a long time, and we're finally trying to adjust those fees to be a little more consistent with the costs that have increased in those expenses. So, I hope that makes sense.
Very, thank you. Is there any other discussion on the five-year forecast? Would you call the roll, please?
Sure. Regano?
No.
Malone?
Yes.
Stukey?
Yes. The motion passes 2-1. Moving on to 3.3, approval of resolution for the sale of personal property value at less than $10,000. Is there a motion to get this on the floor? Some move. Second. Movement seconded, okay, discussion?
Yes, I'll go ahead and briefly explain this. This is a rummage sale that the basketball team is requesting to do. Basically, they have a lot of old jerseys, and old, I'm not even sure, everything that's over there, warmups, old things that have been in their storage facility for years, and what they'd like to do is sell those and help use some of the money to pay for a tournament in Hilton Head that is coming up next year. So what they'd like to do is sell those items, and then we would, I would come back to the board and then do a transfer. So we would deposit the money into the general fund, and then I would do a transfer, request of, come back to the board and request a transfer for whatever they sold, and then deposit that into their fundraising account to help offset some of the expenses for the basketball tournament in Hilton Head. So that's what this resolution is for.
Any discussion?
School bus is a resolution?
School bus?
Yeah.
Or something down there?
Springfield Education has determined that the school bus is valued at less than $10,000, et cetera.
No, it's not that. Actually, Aaron sent me the resolution, so she probably just didn't catch that.
So we're not selling the school bus?
No.
And the athletic is not in the rummage sale?
No, school bus in the rummage sale.
We're going to sell school buses. No, 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 I'll go back through and revise it. No, it's supposed to be old game jerseys, game bottoms, and sweaters. I know, let me, where does it say it at? Where does it say, oh, I see where it's at.
Maybe it's attached to see if it's...
We're really reading this, you are reading, oh, yeah, I'll change that, so when it's...
Or amend the resolution to strike the school bus.
Yes, I'll change it, so that when the minutes are approved, it'll reflect the correct...
That'd be a deal.
Hey, you'd be surprised.
Obviously, John didn't know about it.
No, it's Aaron, yeah, I'm sorry.
All right, any other discussion? Okay, would you call the roll, please?
Regano?
Yes.
Malone?
Yes.
Stukey?
Yes. It passes 3-0. Okay, superintendent's report?
Yes, let's see, second reading, we have two policies up for second reading, there was some discussion at the last board meeting. First is 5111, homeless students, and the second is 5112, entrance. It's not, I am asking for approval of these policy revisions that I presented.
Okay, is there a motion to approve? Some move. Some moves, is there a second? I'll second. Discussion?
Yeah, I raised the issue last time about both of these policies, because I think that they open the door wider for us, potential illegal aliens being served under Springfield District taxpayers' funding and taking the earning services that are for legal residents, those who are entitled to be here, to defer, to leave the funds that we need to educate them. I think both of these policies open the door somewhat for that, and so I don't, I think that, well, I wish they didn't do that, and the state.
Like I said, Mr. President, and Mr. Regano, I know we emailed back and forth, Mr. Dieters or District Attorney, he responded, I think to all of them, or did he just respond, did he respond to everyone? Okay, I apologize. But what he said, very short, is the United States Supreme Court, in a case out of Texas many years ago, held that illegal aliens are entitled to a public education, and cannot be denied access to public education based on their immigration stats. I believe the case is Flyler versus Doe, 1982. And I've mentioned, I wasn't for sure, but I thought that was the case, but that's where we're at.
I understand, but let me, let me just...
I understand.
Let's just let that sink in a little bit. We've got some justices off there in Washington DC, assuming you turn, I mean, turn the caveat of this, assuming he's right, I don't have any reason to doubt it. We have some justices off there in Washington DC telling Springfield citizens, Springfield taxpayers, that they have to pay to educate kids that aren't even entitled to be in this country, they shouldn't even be here. And they're telling Springfield taxpayers that they have to educate them. Let that sink in for a minute, and see if that makes any sense, with what you know about the Constitution, not right, see if that makes any sense whatsoever. Any area? Okay. Well, we may or may not agree with something that the court has decided, but the bottom line is, the court has decided that, and our obligation is to support the legal decisions. And, you know, again, this is one issue that we may not personally like certain aspects of it, but I know the intent of the policy is to protect and give equal rights in terms of the homeless, in terms of individuals, all individuals who live here, the same opportunities. And again, we may or may not have personal feelings one way or the other, but the bottom line is, the courts have ruled on this, and I don't think we have a basis for not supporting the court ruling. So, any other discussion? Good roll, please.
Regano?
No.
Malone?
Yes.
Stukey?
Yes. The motion passes, the policies pass with a 2-1.
Mr. President, 4.2, policy revision, these are first readings, we have seven of them, and what I'd like to ask, if there's anyone here tonight, or perhaps that will watch this tape after it's aired, or perhaps board members, if you would like to email Ms. Benson, or Mr. Pennell, or myself, questions, I'd be free, email all three of us, so that we make sure we are able to get to those. That would be greatly appreciated. But right now, we have college credit plus, which is new, career advising, that appears to be new, non-immigrant students and foreign exchange students, with, I think Dr. Malone, prior to the meeting today, brought something up about, it says in there, talks about four agencies, five students per agency. What we really are looking at is five students total, because there are a lot of things that we have to think about. Number one, our class size, how many kids could we actually accept into the district that are foreign exchange students? And then when the kids are here, we do need to make sure they're taken care of and have what they need, so five definitely would work well there. Next is student accidents, student suicide, animals on district property, and school safety. So we have quite a few there, and if there's questions about those, and we need to leave some of those a first reading, we're able to do that, it's your pleasure, just let us know.
Any comments from, since this is a non-voting item? Any comments, any board members right now?
On the, on the animals, is that, you know, you see people walking their dogs and stuff up there all the time?
Well, there's only so much of that we can control, yes, onto our property, because it is a public facility. I think this is more related to in-school, around students during the school day.
For example, we will be having a special needs student next year who does have a dog, that will be on premises during the school day, at their elementary.
I've had that a couple of times as a parent. Unfortunately, I would be the only person, incidentally, the dog didn't like.
It's strange.
He growled at me every time I walked by.
I did take an opportunity to glance through them, and I'll just mention these, so that if you haven't had a chance to look at them, then you can think about this as you look at them. On the 2271, the college credit plus policy, it refers to AG 2271, which I assume is administrative guideline. And the way that it refers to it, it says that, you know, it basically infers that AG 2271 contains the policy. Had it read that way. 2271 wasn't attached, I mean, if you want to attach that to the policy and kind of put it together, I guess we could do that, but it did seem a little bit backwards. It seemed that, you know, usually we have a policy, and it says, it'll give some general outline of what the policy needs to do, and says, you know, the superintendent shall create an administrative guideline to implement this. This kind of went the other way around, it basically said, this policy is implemented by the administrative guideline, 2271. And so I guess, I'd like us to take a look at that, see if, if you can send me 2271, I would look at that, what I would rather see of the policy is some general statements that says, superintendent shall implement a policy that meets these general guidelines, which is probably consistent with 2271, because they all came from the owner, but I just thought that was off the way that that was scripted in there. And then on 5340, student accidents, a lot of new stuff about concussions, which is kind of the latest thing in sports everywhere. What I was worried about in that is, it talks about concussion or head injury, but it really doesn't describe what a head injury is. And so I could foresee circumstances, given the litigious nature of our society now, where any little scratch or bruise to the head results in a coach or a staff member being afraid to let that kid participate. And so I'm wondering if we can't get some kind of definition around head injury, right? I mean, kids in sports, you can scratch your head and be fine, and, you know, there's the concussion protocol that coaches and referees are trained on. And so I guess, I'd like us to take a look at that and see if, if you can send me 2271, I would look at that. What I would rather see in the policy is some general statements that says superintendent shall implement a policy that meets these general guidelines, which probably consistent with 2271, because they all came from the owner. But I just thought that was off the way that that was scripted in there. And then on 5340, student accidents, a lot of new stuff about concussions, which is kind of the latest thing in sports everywhere. What I was worried about in that is, it talks about concussion or head injury, but it really doesn't describe what a head injury is. And so, I could foresee circumstances, given the litigious nature of our society now, where any little scratch or bruise to the head results in a coach or a staff member being afraid to let that kid participate. And so I'm wondering if we can't get some kind of definition around head injury, right? I mean, kids in sports, you can scratch your head and be fine. And, you know, there's the concussion protocol that coaches and referees are trained on, and athletic trainers, and you have all those people there, they're trained on concussion protocols. But it just struck me that when we say head injury, and we don't go any further than head injury, well, if they got a little bruise, but they don't have any concussion symptoms, is that a head injury? I could see somebody being afraid that it would be deemed a head injury, and then using this policy to implement the guideline. So, at any rate, that was just something I noticed in there, that it said concussion or head injury really didn't define it.
Well, I think on some of these, I know, I just went through that, training myself to be a coach, and they talk about the different things to look for that would show there's, that that concussion has taken place. And then others that aren't so severe, to where you talk with the parent, really left up to the parent and the child. It really, I think, we just reserve the right to say, no, we feel the injury was bad enough, they need to go to the doctor and get a doctor's release.
Well, that's true, and that's what I'm worried about, is that a person who's put in that position of having to do the evaluation, you know, concussion, there's a protocol for it. Head injury is such a general term, it's such a general term, there's really no protocol for it. And so, if you're in that position of having to make that call, you're the coach, and, you know, slid in the second base and got his head bumped, right, and there's a mark. Okay, well, what do you do? And so, if we had a little bit better definition, maybe, maybe that would help. That's all, that's my only thoughts.
There, actually, I believe, Dave, beg me from wrong, there is a protocol here, I mean, just, that's why we have the athletic trainer on staff, is that when an athlete is injured, the trainer, athletic trainer makes a determination about when the person is able to return to participate, not to coach. Because we don't want the coach put in that position.
No.
And so, is that...
Yeah, on a game night, for example, if there's a doctor, you know, the doctor, he has to give the okay for the player to go back in, or they...
Well, at our varsity sports, we have to have a trainer, from cheerleading to varsity football, we have to have an athletic trainer there, present during the event. I know that's one of the things, this year, we scrambled at the last minute, they had a huge cheerleading outing on school property, and we had to get a trainer at the last minute, so, yeah. But still, there are things that even doctors, oh, it's not a problem, and the next thing you know, it's major, and some of it's left on the parent. So, we can look at it and bring it back, because our thing is, we certainly don't want to be liable, and we certainly want the kids to be safe, so...
Right, and at the same time, we don't want to go all the way there, and every little scratch results in a 50 and hold, because we're ready to be sued. I hear what you're saying, Doctor, and I think you're 100% right. Those, whatever the criteria is that the doctor, or the trainer, or whoever does, is probably the right, that's the right thing to do. I'm just worried that the policy just says head injury, generic, it doesn't go any further. Okay. Other discussion on these? Okay, then, moving on, again, these are first reading policy proposals to 4.3.
Yes.
Of the grant.
A request approval of grant for $300 from North of Drummond Electronic Systems for Five Points Elementary. Basically, Kim Peters, who's one of our teachers of Five Points Elementary, was awarded a grant of $300 from this particular company to be used to support Tim. Science, technical, you can hear your man.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
So moved, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, roll call please.
Regano?
Yes.
Hello?
Yes.
Stuckey?
Yes.
Motion passes, 4.4.
Sorry, making sure I take care of that. Approval of donation of $300 from Dayton Foundation Depository, Mr. and Mrs. Chris Albrecht, for the football team. It's $300, but once again, thank you to them as well.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call please.
Regano?
Yes.
Hello?
Yes.
Yes.
The motion passes, 3-0. Okay, Director of Human Resources, Special Ed Report, Benson?
Item 5.1, tonight we bring to the board approval to contract with the Cincinnati Association for the Blind and the Visually Impaired. This will run for the 2000, that's, I believe, that is a typo, it should be the 2015-16 school year. We do have several students that need access to these services, because we do have blind and visually impaired students that we're servicing within our district.
Does this replace an existing contract, or is this a new contract?
It is one we've had in the past.
I'm sorry?
It is one that we've had in the past. We are actually bringing a student back to be housed here in our school district, who has been housed outside in the past.
Okay, is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded, a roll call please.
Regano?
Yes.
Hello?
Yes.
Yes.
The motion passes, 5.2, approval of student service contracts.
These three contracts, two of them are in association with our ESY program that we will be running this summer, and the second one is an individual student contract for a business called Applied Behavior Services.
Okay. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call please.
Regano?
Yes?
Hello?
Yes?
Stuckey?
Yes.
Motion passes, 5.3, approval of athletic summer camp workers?
Yes, this request comes to the athletic department, it is for our summer camp workers, and the payment will be determined based on participation this summer.
Okay. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, roll call please.
Regano?
Yes.
Hello?
Yes.
I have to abstain, because my name's on there, I may volunteer.
Thank you.
Very good. Motion passes, 2-0. Oh, 2-1, I guess. We have to count for all three people on there, yeah. Okay. 5.5, approval to add a part-time physical education health position at the junior high?
Yes, currently, we have over a part-time position being filled at a .64, which is approximately two classes less than full-time. At this point in time, we are asking to add to that to make it a full-time position.
So would the person in that position then become the full-time position?
We will open it up, it will most likely go in that way, yes.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. Case then moved and seconded, roll call please.
Regano?
Yes.
Hello?
Yes.
Stuckey?
Yes.
Motion passes, 5.6, approval of additional classified staff, a .5 custodian?
To the floor, I submit that we retract this due to a change in enrollment, and it's no longer needed.
Okay.
Well, we're...
Okay. 5.7, then, approval of various personnel items?
I believe we skipped one, Dr. Malone, 5.6, additional classified staff, .5 custodian?
Okay, okay, I'm gonna hit it myself. Okay. Okay, is there any discussion on that, as far as, you, Ms. Benson?
This is not really an addition, we are looking at reducing a .5 custodian, and actually moving this, this will be at Clear Creek Elementary for the added help needed for the additional first grade that is going into the new learning center.
Very good. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, roll call please.
Regano?
Yes?
Hello?
Yes?
Stuckey?
Yes.
Motion passes, now, 5.7, approval of various personnel items?
Yes, for the superintendent, we ask for approval items 1 through 42. You will see going through there, we have several resignations, as people are moving on to different career destinations. We are also asking for Title I summer school personnel to be approved, our extended ESY services to be approved, and our summer school at the high school to be approved this evening.
Very good. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call please.
Regano?
Yes?
Hello?
Yes?
Yes.
Motion passes. Okay, Executive Director of Instruction, report?
Yes, we request the approval of the following textbooks for our upcoming school year, next year, AP Economics, AP US History, and AP World History, and that was presented at the last board meeting.
Is there a motion?
So moved. Second?
Yes, then moved and seconded, discussion?
Is it how the AP World History is going to be fresh still, is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Roll call please.
Regano?
Yes.
Hello?
Yes?
Yes.
The motion passes. Okay, item number seven, reports from board members, questions and comments. Mr. Strickey?
The only thing I have is that our girls softball team at this time is playing in the regional semis. They've been on a roll here lately, and I think they were playing in Mason, at West Carroll?
Northmont?
Northmont.
North.
Oh, at Northmont, yeah.
Okay.
So, hopefully, we have a good result from that.
Very good. Regano?
Yeah, I'd like to take a couple minutes this evening. If you recall last meeting, Mr. Anderson was upset that I hadn't made any comments for a couple of meetings, and I told him that I would work on some for this meeting, unfortunately, really unfortunate for the circumstances that he's not here. He's not here. But, but, you know, this is the last board meeting before graduation, that's Saturday, right? It is, come Saturday. And I thought it would be appropriate to, and with that in mind, I was looking for something that I might say about graduates, and congratulations to the graduates we have here tonight. And I happen to be reading a book called The History of the State of Ohio by Caleb Atwater. And the dedication in that book is something I wanted to share with folks. You might ask who's Caleb Atwater, but first. And Caleb Atwater was born in 1778, just after the end of the Revolutionary War. And in 1830, when he was 16 years old, he wrote this history of Ohio, the first documented history of Ohio. And it helps with a little bit of context with his dedication, to kind of understand the climate in 1838. And it was a time where there was some economic upheaval. It wasn't that long ago before the War of 1812 occurred. And, you know, he would have been, I don't know, 20 or so, about that time. And so, he had witnessed that firsthand. He was a representative in the Ohio House of Representatives for several terms, and ended up being the postmaster in Circleville. He was also historian, and he wrote this history on this. And he dedicated, at the front of this history, he wrote a dedication to the young men of Ohio, which I think, you know, we could extend to the graduates of Springbrough. Let me take a moment and read his dedication. "This volume is respectfully dedicated to you, as the destiny of this great state soon will be. So this book is delivered to you for safety. In writing this volume, my thoughts have always rested in you, in the full confidence that you will carry out all the great measures of your fathers, that you will rectify our errors, and keep pace with the age in which you will live. Your fathers have done more than even they ask you to do, and they have gone ahead of the age in which they lived. Their toils, sufferings, and privations have been the feebly depicted by me in this work, because I did not wish to boast in their names of what they had done, as a duty which they owed their children. The liberties of this country have been preserved by those who achieved them, and their sons have also preserved them until very recently. But great efforts have been made, and are making, and will be made, to pull from beneath all the main pillars on which our Temple of Liberty rests. So far as I could in this volume, placed before you the principles of your fathers, as a sin insurer of liberty, I have so fearlessly done. I have everywhere spoken exultingly of the future, but my young friends' candor compels me to confess that all such passages in my writings of later years have been written with a heavy heart. However, to you, under the direction of a kind providence, kind indeed to you, I commit my volume, and all the aspirations which I feel for your prosperity in common with your parents and friends. If this republic must be destroyed, it will be affected by destroying liberty of speech and of the press, and on some particular subject at first, but extending its encroachments, all freedom of speech and of the press will be blotted out. In that case, the party of power will seize the occasion to entrench themselves in high places, and unless the people shed rivers of blood, those in office will remain incubus in body politic. When that day arrives, rather than yield up the liberties of this country to the men who are aimed at their destruction, I would prefer to see our own Ohio, resting the storm of war alone, if need be, and our citizens either maintaining their ground valiantly and victoriously, or dying gloriously. If liberty ever quits this union, may her last footsteps, tinged with blood, be imprinted deeply on every plain and every hill of Ohio. My young friends, we live in a ventful period, and you can hardly expect to sustain liberties of this country without the utmost vigilance. Watch the men in power in Washington City. What I say to you, I say to all, watch them, because they need it. Watch yourselves, watch all parties, and resist every encroachment on your rights. Beware too closely of following any party, and be sure not to adhere to any popular favorite. Bitter experience teaches us to do so no more." Springbrough graduates, would you permit me to suggest to you that Mr. Atwater, what he wrote in 177 years ago, is pretty sage and timeless advice. And just as in the early 1800s, there are people around the world, and in our country, and in our government, aimed at destroying free speech on particular subjects and extending those encroachments. They have entrenched themselves in high places, and they will take advantage of our current crises, even manufactured crises. It was never more apparent that we can't expect to sustain liberties of this country without the utmost vigilance. It is a bitter experience that, to a large extent, my generation has not watched those men in Washington City closely enough, and we have allowed them to encroach too much over our rights, which are your rights. This week, we honor those who died for the cause of liberty. As you assume the mantle of responsibility for preserving the Temple of Liberty, recognize while they died protecting us from foreign adversaries, each citizen in this country, it is our duty to watch those people in power in Washington City, in Columbus City, and in Springbrough City with the utmost vigilance, because we need it. The diploma you've earned, you didn't earn just to get a job, or get into college so that you can get a job, you earned it so that you might recognize and resist every encroachment on your rights, the rights your parents, grandparents, and their grandparents shed blood to preserve for you in the solemn hope that you wouldn't have to. Graduates, our thoughts rest on you, in the full confidence that you will carry out all the great measures that may be required, that you will rectify our errors, and keep pace with the age in which you will live. However, to you, under the direction of kind providence, please know all the aspirations which we feel for your prosperity in common with your parents and friends. Thank you, Dr. Malone.
A couple of comments, one, just a couple weeks ago, I had the opportunity, along with Mr. Petrie, to attend the Project Excellence Awards Program at the Warren County Career Center. He was recognizing, of course, two teachers from various districts. And one item struck me, when each teacher spoke, was they had a minute, I believe, to speak, and it pretty well stayed on track, that it was what their students and parents and so forth were saying about them, what made them an outstanding teacher. And without exception, the outstanding teachers were viewed as outstanding because of the relationship they had with their students, the relationship they had with parents, and the fact that they genuinely cared about them as individuals. And I think it's important for us to always keep that in mind, that our teachers have the job of educating, of providing the, literally, the facts, the figures, if you want to call it that. it that. But a teacher who does that alone will never be considered outstanding teacher because it takes the other piece too. And never was that more apparent than at the Project Excellence Award Program a couple of weeks ago. The other comment I'd like to make is on this past Tuesday night, I had a chance along with Mr. Stricki to attend a senior awards night, at least most of it before a board meeting. And again, what a wonderful group of young people we have. The awards they receive, the honors that they have brought upon themselves, their family and the school district are incredible. So each and every person in our community should be very proud of the individuals we are sending forward to the world. Thank you. Future considerations.
This time, I did want to add though, I was going to comment. What was the scholarship of like four point six million dollars?
Just under four point six million.
It's amazing.
Four point, four million five hundred and ninety-one thousand, one hundred and twenty-nine dollars. And it was, it was a great night. We had everywhere from students like, you know, Emma and who had graduated speed recognized as well as we had a student who received an appointment to West Point Academy, which was well over eight hundred thousand dollars. Then another student received an Air Force scholarship for well over a hundred thousand to OU, to multiple athletic and other academic scholarships. It was just awesome.
Okay, very good. With that said, that does conclude the work part of our agenda, the action part of our agenda. Take a five-minute break before we go into work session.
Sure.
Very good.
I've been reconvening for our work session.
Mr. President, pardon me, if we could move ten point five to ten point one, I would greatly appreciate. Our high school assistant principals are here and they're going to do a code of conduct presentation. I might even go first and get them out of here so they can go home and get some rest before they get up at six o'clock in the morning.
Five-thirty.
Five-thirty, whatever. I know I said incorrect. Either way, it's early.
Sure.
Rob the mic, floor is yours. But before we start, what I'd like to say is I'd like to thank these gentlemen. They worked with all the assistant principals across the district, revised our code of conduct, which was much in need, and then they took it back to the principals and myself and they have presented to our district parent council, our business advisory council, various team leaders, department chairs, and now for the final stop, here's the Board of Education. So we've got a lot of good feedback about this from multiple different stakeholder groups.
All right, well, we'll go ahead and get started. Student code of, actually, last year, one of the things that came up in, within district meetings, principal meetings, was the fact that code of conduct needed to be revised. This year, as Rob came on, me and my second year, we both said, this needs to be revised. And so we sat down, brought it up, or brought it up to Todd, he said, well, let's get it done. And these are some of the reasons why we felt like it needed to be, to be redone. As we used it, over me, over the last two years, and Rob over this last year, we saw there were redundancies. We wanted to condense similar rules or into one. Also, it's difficult to use. If you wanted to find a particular rule, a lot of them started out the same way and you couldn't tell which rule applied to the situation until you read it halfway through. So we wanted to simplify that. We wanted to make sure it was aligned with the ORC. We wanted to get some legal input with that as well. We added and deleted some of the language to clarify appearance and then we also tried to prioritize it with the ones that we use most frequently first.
The way it all came about, the process, you know, we kind of brought up some of these things that we noticed and then anytime you bring something up like that, you need to be prepared to take on the task. And so that task was handed down to us. And the first thing we did was look at similar districts. Mason, Lebanon, Centerville, some other districts similar to us and look at their codes of conduct, look at that one, look at our current one, and you know, just start going through it. We started to try to group ones, our current code of conduct, and started to go through them, subtitles that we felt they fall under. And as we started to do that, we realized that we would have two or three or four that we felt fell under the same category. So we kind of did our own rough draft. The next step was to present that to all of our district administrators, assistants, and building principals and get their input, make those revisions. From there, we sent it on to our district attorney and had her look at it, look at it, give us more feedback to make sure it was legal and we made sure our language did not have any issues, made those adjustments. And then this last month, we have presented it to more stakeholders in the district and in the community.
And as we already mentioned, some of the stakeholders were the district principals as well as the other assistant principals. We also brought it before the department chairs within high school and district parent council, business advisory council, and of course, Board of Education.
These are some examples of what we did when we went through our current code. The top part there is our current code of conduct and Rule eight, ten, and eleven. When we read those rules, we were sitting there together, we categorized them under insubordination and we felt we were able to take those three rules and combine them into one and cover all the same bases and descriptions and give it subtitles and, you know, make it more user-friendly. You know, part of this process is make it more user-friendly, not just for us, but for parents and students. Try to take out some of the confusion that we were coming across.
Here's another example. There's a spot in the current code of conduct where you have even murder. I don't know if you knew this or not, but murder's not allowed if you murder someone that's not allowed to be at the school. As well as other felonious acts, rape, gross sexual misimposition, and so on, these are actual rules that were in the code of conduct, but all of these really fall under the criminal and felonious acts. And so we just grouped all these into that criminal and felonious acts because it's actually covered in the ORC that way.
Our current code of conduct has fifty-six rules that are totally unorganized and scattered throughout, very difficult to sift through at times and find what violation falls under what category. We were able to narrow it down to thirty-nine rules to this proposal while adding three new rules that were not, that are not in our current code of conduct. Currently, there's nothing in our current code with internet network usage. There's nothing in there about bullying as far as that being its own separate rule and there's nothing in there about bus behavior in the current code of conduct.
So essentially, what we've tried to do is make this a much more concise product just for our parents, for the staff, for the district as a whole. Any questions?
Thank you.
And we will be breaking this for a while.
Mr. Your honor?
Hey, I appreciate what you're doing because two of rules consolidate, but I think that's a good way to go. I had a criticism of our policy manual. There's so many policies, nobody can ever track them all right now. Be there two of those, I think. Just reading through what you had, I was wondering if there weren't even more opportunities to consolidate because it seemed like there weren't a lot of items that, well, dealt with disruption of kinds of things. And then there were a whole number of items that dealt with harassment. I understand that you might have reasons for keeping some of those in there because students, it might be more specific. But I did see that there were several factors in there that kind of fall in the harassment bullying category. And then I guess sort of a related question, but maybe not one for this policy. Down at the end of the policy, there's a little word on that, or the code of conduct, I call it policy code of conduct. There's a little word on this end. I don't, I think we have a separate policy that deals with this one. I don't know if it makes sense to maybe move that to that policy or not.
You're referring to the, after Rule thirty-nine of the last piece?
Yeah, that last little section there.
We did not, we did not address this, this piece from the original code. Just because it says the superintendent and we felt like that was not our area to address.
That, what that did was it started me thinking about discipline, which may be outside the realm of what you're doing, but let me just say anyway that one of the issues I think we've had over the years is consistency or, you know, parents had a complaint about discipline. It's whether that level of discipline was appropriate for the offense. And I'm curious as to the follow-on activity is to somehow categorize the offenses and, you know, obviously you can have a mild case of harassment and you can have a serious case of harassment, so there needs to be a range of discipline there. But there are different degrees, you know, different violations and different rules should have stronger consequences if, you know, they're not all able, right?
Yes.
Somebody that are drinking alcohol is a serious offense as using illegal drugs. That kind of distinction. I'm wondering if we're working towards having some kind of a presc然for, I don't want to say standardizing because there's always a range, but some kind of a matrix or.
Our next, our next project is to start to look at the handbook and some of those topics. Mr. Petrie's actually brought up those same questions. Some areas you addressed yourself is you can have a level of harassment that can be as much as, hey, you want to talk about this, this is your warning, don't do that again. Two, ten days' recommendation for expulsion. So there are certain, certain areas where I think it's impossible to get, to create a rubric, whereas other areas I think that it is possible. Within our handbooks, there are current board policies for, you know, alcohol and drug, you know, use, first offense is this, second offense is this. But there, we, that is our next step. And all the district assistant principals are looking at each building's handbooks and trying to see where we can consolidate as a district and create district policies in areas and then what things are building specific, and that is our next. We felt like we had to start at the top of the code and then work our way down. If the handbooks are longer, it's going to take longer.
If I could comment on that.
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Bird. What we have to look at, Jim, when you're really looking at disciplines, I've worked in, Preston had it to where if you did this, you could get anywhere from detention to ISS. If you did this, it's ISS expulsion. It's malicious intent is what it comes down to. If you're harassing someone, it's, you know, the kids will a lot of times tell you, well, it wasn't that bad. But when there's malicious intent, that's when it goes to the extreme side. And that's what we spoke with our attorneys about, that the way that it's written here gives it broad to where you really can give more consideration to the student because every case is different to where when we put parameters in place, it really locks us in to punish kids even more severely. Because I wanted the parameters myself and that was one of the reasons we backed off after speaking to the attorney.
You know, that's exactly what I was going to say is that I would be surprised if a, if legal counsel would recommend that we have kind of a cookbook approach toward our discipline because you want that flexibility and that's why, you know, like in your first, your paragraph there, and you list all the possible consequences for all the possible offenses. And you want the administration, the teachers, to have that flexibility to deal with a specific situation and plug it in. You can have guidelines to say, in general, you know, you do the ISS, what it's going to be, but you want that flexibility because sure as the world, if you come up with a cookbook of cause effect, you're going to have a situation that comes up and you think, wow, this is, this is really too severe for this, for this penalty, for this situation, or it's not severe enough.
That's what you're running.
And so anyway.
And I think just in talking to parents, what you find is they want two things. They want consistency, but they also want flexibility. And I think when you, that's the hard part to crack, is being able to crack something that's both consistent and flexible at the same time. And that's, that's what we need to look at.
And they also want the ability to be heard. So it's still to where, we may even add another layer to the policy of if one of our assistants suspends someone, they should be able to appeal to the principal. Right now, it says straight to the superintendent. But then if they don't like the answer of the superintendent, they can bring it to the Board of Education and executive session. So we still have that parameter that's in there, but what I always talk with the assistants and principals about, when they call me and say, here's a situation, the first thing I ask is, do you see malicious intent? Because that is where the use of nature is what ranks that up higher. But yeah, what Ron said is exactly where our attorneys were too, is you really paint yourself into a corner because you're going to have someone that tears the, and this happened to me when I was underneath it, tears the paper towel dispenser off the wall and it's destruction of school property, in-school suspension three days. Well, now wait, what really happens with that? Because as soon as you don't, and then the next time you go to suspend someone, then it gets into you are showing favoritism. It makes it tough. But, you know, we, we actually spent a lot of time talking about that.
I understand the need for being able to have a lot of latitude to judge on it. The question is how do you, how do you get to be consistent?
And fair. You want to be fair. You want to be seen as fair to the community and to the students who go through this. It's tough. Discipline is tough.
And you're also challenged because you don't really have all that many tools in your toolbox for discipline. Maybe you're more creative than I am, but at least when I was in school, it was detention, it was suspension, you could have multiple days of suspension, you could get paddled on the butt.
Yeah, that was in school when I was in there too.
And that was, by the way, the biggest deterrent. But I know that it's limited, so if you're talking about suspensions, you know, is knocking the thing off, knocking the hand dryer off the wall, is that a three-day suspension? And fighting's a three-day suspension? That's the kind of stuff where I think you need some thought in there to, you know, if it's the third time it gets knocked the, the hand dryer off the wall, that's different. But at the same time, you know, the violent things, it's even like those, you know, they are more severe than a lot of the other things.
You know, our, our number one goal is to educate and the last thing we want to do is suspend students out of school. So, you know, we're, we're very diligent and, you know, we always communicate before we do something like that to get feedback with each other and Mr. Martin before we make that decision. You know, and always cover all of our bases with that. As far as, I was trying to be consistent best we can, we sat down at the beginning of the year and created our own guidelines that we were going to follow together and I think we've done a very good job of doing that. But, but we always collaborate, communicate, you know, talk about what's been done in the past, where we at, what, you know, how we're going to maintain and keep consistent.
I think it's went well so far. And that might be the best way to do it is to not put it in any formal board-level document to maybe have administrative guide.
Well, technically, we're supposed to have the code of conduct approved and the handbooks. So we're trying to scramble to get it all done, but we're supposed to have those approved. Make sure you guys agree.
I think you kind of hit on the head in terms of communication, making sure all you guys are on the same page and, and, you know, understanding too that the consequences that, for a certain offense, high school versus junior high versus elementary are likely to be different just because the nature of children and where they are developmentally and.
And expectations as well.
Sure, sure.
Well, they do. I think all our principals do a really nice job on heavy, they bring up situations and they talk about sixth grade versus high school, second grade. We all have some little ones that do some things from time to time. So it's, they do a real So it's, uh, they do a really nice job. You guys did a great job. A lot of districts pay people to do this stuff. I didn't tell you that upfront. You're not getting paid anymore. Enjoy your paycheck tomorrow, but nonetheless, you guys did a very nice job.
Thanks for having me.
That'd be all right. Look at it. You didn't do anything. They did it. Okay. Gentlemen, if you need to go, that'd be great, because I know you've spent a lot of long evenings here recently. Okay, uh, Borough Fest Student Hours. We have talked a little bit about this, the, the board and I communicate a lot, and that's much appreciated. Um, I want to solidify this because tomorrow, Mr. Martin, or, or Monday, he needs to get this out to the students. First of all, the, we'll start with pay to participate. For, since I've been superintendent here, and it might have been my first year to create this, Mr. Regano, the kids who are in athletics, since we have pay to participate, I think it's two sixty at the high school, one sixty at the junior high, they can work ten hours at ten dollars an hour, work off a hundred dollars per sport. So we are going to open that up for the Borough Festival. The Borough Festival, again, just so the community knows, the number one goal is to bring the community together. And the number two goal is to generate money that the parents who run this program will accept a list of unmet needs from us, and then they will take that money and help the district out, which a penny saves a penny earned. It's going to be something that doesn't come out of the general fund. So in order to do that, they need approximately two hundred volunteers. That is a mass fundraiser, which I think they are finding out right now. Now, we do have various student organizations, ROTC, I know they're already helping with parking, National Honor Society, they have some different things that they have to do. But one of the things, um, that we're going to do is open it up to our pay to participate students. Our athletic director has created a process that they'll have to follow, and we are going to allow them to earn up to thirty hours if, if they can. It's going to be very difficult to do that, but there's setup and teardown. They can't use any machinery. Um, they can like put out trash cans, they can move bleachers around, they can assist adults in doing things, but nothing to the point in eye, we have an attorney's opinion on this, that could be dangerous to their health. They can't run a lawnmower, they can't run a weed ear or anything like that. During the event, uh, they will be there to help with whatever jobs need to take place. And there will be a lot, from the area where people eat, uh, they'll, they could clean up that area, replacing trash cans, that, perhaps standing at one of the gates, recruiting people, there's all kinds of things that the Borough Fest people will work with Mr. Pennell and our athletic director. And soon to hook in our high school principal on this, he just doesn't know yet. I'm going to let him get through the year first, before he hears what else he has to do. We'll work with them on that. Another option is, um, for the first hundred seniors that sign up, uh, since we're increasing our parking pass, if they work three hours, they could earn twenty-five dollars off of that pass. If they are, work six hours, they could essentially get that pass for free. Now, the key to this is, is one hour cannot be equivalent for most. They'll have to do those separate. And we're going to have a process in place for that. So those are some of the things we're looking at right now. I hope the kids take us up on it. We've not had a great turnout with the work hours to pay to participate. I think this year was like seventeen thousand dollars. So, I mean, our kids are busy. They're very busy. Like a little girl here, the ninth and five honors classes. Some of the kids are doing that and sports, and they're busy. Plus they work. Their parents have them work a job elsewhere. So nonetheless, I wanted to run that by you and get your thoughts. Uh, we are also going to have it open that if kids just want to volunteer, they can. Uh, but it's going to be offered to the first one hundred seniors in terms of the parking pass.
You mentioned thirty hours. Uh, after thirty hours, you're going to toward the.
Pay to participate. That's ten hours per sport. So they would have it being three sports, and then we're going to have a different color worksheet per sport. So if they are in.
Okay. My question there, that would be directly, my question though is that, um, if, if a student wants to participate, if does not want to participate in Borough Fest, but wants to work in some other activity, you know, to, to knock down their student fees, will they get thirty hours, the same opportunity or thirty hours?
During the school year?
Yes.
Yeah, they'll still have that as well. These are just additional jobs that the kids can do.
I thought there was a cap right now of ten hours in my.
Per sport.
Ten hours per sport.
But if they're going to play three sports in a year, they can come and do thirty hours.
Yeah, that's fine.
And they may. We'll have to see.
There are comments on that?
Um, well, I guess I have a little bit of misgiving some parking fee, um, mainly because this is a fundraiser. I mean, the, the idea is, is to raise a significant amount of money to benefit the athletic programs. So everything that we, everything we give out, obviously is working against that goal.
I agree.
And, uh, yeah, given that this is a, a big athletic parking fundraiser, primarily, and it's not exclusively there, but I think the Borough Fest organizers would tell you that, that that is their primary goal is to be able to support, help support our extra curriculars. Um, you know, if we could get coaches to take up, you know, do, uh, and have their teams take duty, I think that would be wonderful. Uh, just like they do at the concession stand, you know, and athletic boosters call them up and coaches take turns. Maybe that's already in progress.
It is. Yeah. Actually, Mr. Sookie was at that meeting. Um, that was at the YMCA last Sunday night. I think we have a, I think we have a note this coming, this coming Sunday night. Every coach, at least one coach from every sport was, was present. And they are responsible for a booth or some type of activity that their parents and/or players need to oversee. And I think Vance probably also going to get involved in this as well. So that is something that they're going to oversee as well.
And I'm wondering if, if, if we get that support, whether we need to do the parking thing plus, um, you know, I think you were saying, you know, a hundred, a hundred people discussing parking passes or parking fees, parking passes. What if you're a hundred and one? I mean, I, it just seems like if we could avoid doing that.
One hundred, one hundred. And the first hundred, I must say.
But the, uh, you know, that hundred, first person's going to have problems or, or whatever reason. And here, I'm just thinking that if we could avoid that.
No, I'm fine with it. That's why I wanted to bring it up. We really aren't making a full-blown decision here, but the pay to participate is kind of a given. We could start with that and see what kind of involvement we have at the last minute. If we see maybe two or three weeks before, we just aren't going to have the participation we need through just regular volunteering. We could look at this, and somehow Mr. Martin's going to find out how to communicate when the seniors in the middle of the summer. Is that even possible?
I love you, but I discount parking passes. I imagine in a few minutes it's.
Yeah, I'm sure if, uh, we could call a few kids and say, will you put this on Facebook? And we're going to be at the school from ten to twelve on a certain day, and the first hundred kids, whatever they can get here. But I'm fine with that because, I mean, that has crossed my mind. You're, it's a considerable amount of money. And there's nothing wrong with good old-fashioned volunteering because it's the right thing to do either. So I've had a lot, I've, I've, I have discussed this in multiple arenas, and the comment I always get back is, do we have to pay our youth now to get them to volunteer? It is a, it's a, when you really sit down and think about it, we do have to look at the decisions we went and acquired we modeled for kids. We really do.
Is, uh, is supervision issue here, if we have a hundred kids out here, is, is, is there going to be a supervisor of them?
There is. And that is why I'm still, I've worked with Mr. Bruner, and I think Mr. Weedman's working on some of those volunteers with Mrs. Cool, and they're working on a communication program. But we are going to want, you know, one supervisor for, looking at high school seniors, you know, ten or twenty kids. It all depends what it is they're being asked to do. Because right now, we can have ten kids show up at the high school, and one custodian could say, you know, can you go and take care of this? And we have good kids. They go and get things done. So we don't have kids, across the board, we have great kids. And I think we really have to worry about a lot of things. They're very responsible when they sign up for something. So again, this is a learning process. It's something that's never really been done in school systems. And, um, three or four gentlemen have taken this on, and it is quite a task. But they're really pulling together nicely. I know I'm appreciative of what they've done. So we could start with, um, pay to participate, see where we get from there. Because you're right, for every penny we give out, it's a penny that's coming off what they're trying to accomplish.
I, I would vote with a number of kids, you know, participating in schools. If you get two hundred volunteers to implement their parents, it would be pretty straightforward. I know the concession stand, they never have problems that way.
It's tough. It, you're, I hope you're right, but volunteers, it is, I remember being the building principal. Wow. Getting volunteers.
It's a little bit different when you're a judge and you're a lawyer. At least that's my perception.
They're all working on it. They're looking at the games they're going to do, and they're kidding each other about wrestling doing basketball, basketball doing wrestling. Oh, Lord. We'll see. So let's, do all three of you feel pretty good about that? Let's start with pay to participate first, and then if we see that's just not panning out like it needs to, then we could go to the parking pass later.
I think we could have another.
Another avenue.
Possible option in the parking.
What's that?
Preferred parking?
I think the students, I, I think the, the students would, they're more interested in being able to choose their spot than they are how much, how much it costs. And if, if they.
They pay fifty dollars a parking spot thirty, before they would pay twenty-five dollars a parking spot three sixty-two.
But we're still going to, based on like OGT.
Yes, that would come first.
ACTs still do that. You could, you just reserve, uh, twenty-five spots and, and you could even, to be quite honest, you could even do it for anybody who wants to, for every hour you work, there's a ticket goes in a bucket. So if you work ten hours, ten tickets go in with your name on it, we're going to pull twenty-five names and you're in the second row.
It's a great idea. You guys agree?
If that pay to play reimbursement is not.
I think even if they do pay to participate and their name goes into a bucket like that, I don't see anything wrong with that.
The thing is, the parents are paying for parking most of the time, so that would motivate kids way more than taking money off. Actually, I think if we're doing it wrong, we're already.
Good idea, absolutely.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea.
The parents would love it.
Yeah.
No, they're the ones that have to pay for it.
I think that's a great idea.
Of course, the parents might say, go out there and work. You need to do something for that fifty dollars. Great idea. The, the, the next. We have a board meeting scheduled for June ninth, one for June twenty-third, and one for July twenty-first. The problem with those are laid out, and every year it's different based on who you need to hire. By July tenth, we need all of our people hired, and districts won't let them out of their contracts after that. That's one issue. The second issue is today, I think I can say this, I'm going to go ahead and say it. Both of our associations, our classified unions and our teachers union, we came to an agreement, preliminary agreements. Nothing is an agreement until the board says yes or no with a majority. Um, they are going to be voting on Tuesday, um, as they're different associations to approve those agreements. And what I would like to do is next Thursday, have a board meeting, and it will replace the June ninth board meeting. So it's not a special meeting where it's going to change the date. And that would be very helpful to us because then Tara has multiple things financially that she needs you to approve that are just end-of-the-year type things. Uh, we'd be able to get that ratified so that the teachers and the classified staff or custodians and everyone has this taken care of before they leave for the year. I think it'd be very respectful to do that as well. And then what I'd like to propose is we not have another board meeting until July seventh. And why I say July seventh is then we can get everyone hired and do everything that we need to do, and then come to you on July seventh, get the yes or the no on all of our employment, and then those people have enough time to tell their given district or whatever employee, the employer they may have, that they need to resign. That gives us time to get everything taken care of. Because we are.
We just have the, the one in June early, it'll just be next week, and that's it.
Correct. So we would have one on June fourth and one on July seventh. Because I think the Ju, the June twenty-third is conflicting already, uh, for several people. I know June ninth was for me, but I would have planned my vacation based around that June twenty-third. So unless, I'm going to call my wife and change that. So nonetheless, it would, I think it would save your time and you time and us too if we just do June fourth and July seventh.
Not, um, well, I guess. Yeah, we've rescheduled a number of meetings here. Um, with Mr. Petroni, he's not here tonight. He's actually got a scheduled vacation tonight. But the last three meetings he's missed because we've rescheduled them, and we're rescheduling another one. And, uh, I, I guess personally I'm available, but I really don't want to reschedule it if, if we're moving into a time when, when one of the board members just can't make it there. And so I think that given we've rescheduled three on him and he's had to miss three, um, prior to this meeting, we kind of owe it to him to see if he's available on the fourth before we agree to do that.
Well, I text him today, and I text all of you, I'm going to ask you this. And I know today wasn't rescheduled, but I don't think he's for sure on the other ones either. So, I mean, I can follow up with him again, but with his schedule the way it is, even during the week sometimes things come up where he has to leave, which makes it very difficult as well. Because right now, we, with our last one would be, um, well, if we have it on June twenty-third, we're not going to have a majority here, so that one's going to have to go.
Why don't we do this if it makes sense? I mean, it, it seems like we, we don't really have a choice except to have one June fourth because of the, uh, the contract.
Right.
Contracts. So is it okay if we go ahead and reschedule one for June fourth? And then, uh, you know, at that point, like the next Thursday, make the decision about the ninth and the twenty-third? Can we, can we split that up?
What, what about June fifth?
June fifteenth, Friday night.
Yeah.
No, I'm sorry. Well, I, I spoke.
I, I guess I'm saying no because I think, I think Mr. Petroni has the right to be here. And so I'm not agreeing to the fourth, to find out if he can make it. And if he can't make it the fourth, there's a real good chance he's coming into town on the fifth, and he would be able to make the fifth.
We'd like to do it Monday to Thursday.
And if not, then.
I don't think we can do it based on any specific schedule. We, we don't know about Mr. Anderson. But to me, this is, this is really important that we, if we have a contract to vote on for our unions, we need to do it as soon as we can. And, you know, just, I, I hope everyone can be there next Thursday. But I, at the same time, I, I do not, I personally do not support moving the class to the classroom.
Perhaps I asked Dave, Wednesday, June third works better. I mean, I think people are flexible that week, but I would like to get this done before both staffs take off. But some of that following week, a lot of people will be gone, I think. There is a part of just that staff appreciation of getting this off their mind, because it's on a lot of their minds.
The associations are voting when?
Tuesday.
So we got their voting when?
That would be the, their Saturday.
They're voting on the Saturday.
So we could do the third or the fourth.
I'm a.
Can we do the second?
Either one works for me.
But that's.
That's the night then, they, are they, they're voting in the evening? Yeah.
Well, is there a motion? I guess we're going to have to, it requires a motion, is your.
No, it doesn't require a motion.
It does not require a motion, okay?
It doesn't require a motion. I can just change it and hope for the best. I mean, I could check with both of them. I just don't know what it entails, counting the votes and all those types of things. I could check with the OAA and see how it works.
Tuesday, Tuesday is Charles's Assistant Law Service.
Okay. So I'd like, it'd be nice to push it back to Thursday.
Is that the visitation room?
Well, I think it's all kind of rolled into one. In Cincinnati.
But I can tell you this, I've asked all the departments on June ninth, we have nothing to bring. So, um, but what, the way our hiring, we don't. So, but what, the way our hiring is, we don't have a lot of people coming and going this year later in July, because it's this time of the year, people end up telling you, one of the reasons for eliminating June ninth is we really just don't have anything.
Well, what's a fifth either one works for me. The third, the fourth, third, the fourth.
Third, the fourth. Pretty good. All right, we'll, I'll, I'll check. I'll text David when we do here tonight, because definitely Charles, big guy, so... And if his sister-in-law's visitation is on Tuesday, we'll probably have something on Wednesday, more than likely. So, I think the fourth would probably work the best.
Okay. Excellent. Did, did you bypass the two points, ten point two, by the way?
The Borough Fest?
The fee, the fees, school fees. Ten point two.
I bet you haven't, we're getting Dr. Malone. And that was taken off, because we wanted to get a little more information on it.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, sorry. We took that off, because we're still looking at the secondary levels, we're trying to boost the price of the players.
Very good, so moving on. Okay, yeah. Take the tech, the ten point, whatever, just textbook and novel options?
Yes, ten point four is novel.
Well, actually, it's a novel idea, yes. Thank you for that. We are bringing forward several novels that we would like to get approved, and, and before I get started, I guess I, I kinda wanna say thank you to all our parents and, and our, our PTOs and, and our, our teachers who have submitted, you know, multiple models, and we'll continue this process with a lot of interest in, in, you know, creating these opportunities for our students in the classroom. So, we're excited about the ones that, that we've brought forward. We have twenty-three that we, we had of consideration. We have a couple that are, are basically, we're, we're actually not going to give forward, and those are noted in, in this document that you probably have. But again, I wanna thank the folks that have really stepped up and helped us in that process, because it is, it is something that requires some time, but I was excited to sit down with the PTOs at the junior high and high school, or I'm sorry, the junior high and sixth grade, and they were quite helpful. We're still working through that process, and we're trying to work really hard to consolidate and put together a document that has all our current adopted novels, and continue to increase that, that list and those options for our classroom teachers. So, what I've, what we have put together in the curriculum department, and all those have, have been involved, again, much appreciated. But the document that I have, there's twenty-three books, novels, that we were bringing forward for consideration to be taught or to be used in our language arts classrooms.
Comments or thoughts?
Any comments?
Just a question. I know, I know you work really hard to get parents to help review these. How, how successful were you?
Well, we, that's a great question. I think what's, and, and I think, Mr. Petrie had mentioned some, you know, people are very, very busy, and, and I think when we stepped in and sat down with the PTOs and, and kinda put some, some of the messages out there, and, and Mrs. DeRosa helped us quite a bit with, with some of the information, getting that out. A lot of parents stepped up at that time. We had three curriculum nights set up, and I have to tell you, we, our attendance was not very good. Yeah, there weren't any. We had a couple people, we had a couple people that, but you had already stepped up and, and read some books. But we had, I think the first night, we had two people, and one of them was a principal. And then the sex, second night, we had, you know, some parents that, that stepped in a few. So, those nights aren't as successful. So, I think we are trying to develop a more streamlined process to really help out with that.
Well, I, I do appreciate your effort there, and I guess it's disappointing that, that we didn't get more interest from parents. We don't do anything more important than, well, it, it's very important, the material that gets introduced to their kids, and they, whether they recognize it or not. I think it's kind of a cultural thing, which kind of conditioned the parents to just kind of be hands-off, but, I think with some more encouragement, maybe we can get some parents really interested and engaged in, in understanding what materials are being presented to their kids. So, I appreciate your efforts on that. And I hope that you weren't discouraged by the low attendance. The, the law only requires us to give them the opportunity. We obviously can't make them help us. But we did give them the opportunity, and I guess I hope that they'll, they'll persist in the future.
Well, we, we have had, you know, some, we have had quite a few parents that have stepped up and, and are reading, reading their husbands to read, Mrs. DeRosa, her husband to read for us, and, and so it's, I, I think it's something that we have to cultivate a little bit more, and we have to kind of reach out in maybe different ways. But those particular nights, I don't think are necessarily as successful as, as other avenues that I think we need to, to look for. And it needs to be an ongoing process. It can't just be at a certain time of the year. It should be ongoing. And, and so that's what we're trying to develop, so that process is, is a little bit more fluid, if you will.
Well, thank you. I, I, I think it is important that we try to engage those parents, and I think you're right. It's something that I think will get better as we keep trying to engage them, and they get accustomed to doing that.
Keep in mind, though, I had multiple parents approach me, and their comments actually were very nice compliments to the board of, they trust the board, and they do trust us to bring books to their kids. So, don't outrule that one either. I mean, these people elected all of you, and they believe in you guys, do your job. And they know you have heated discussions about what's right, what's wrong, and they go through that. We're coming up with some good solutions to them.
That is, that's the point I was gonna make, is that if, if, if the public was not satisfied with the type of books we're, we're selecting, we would be hearing about it, and, and we would see a participation in the variety. So, there, that's the other side of this.
Well, and I, and I do want to reiterate, and, and again, thank the teachers. They are very passionate about, you know, bringing forward, you know, some of these novels that, that are of huge, huge interest, and ones that they feel are very important for our students to, to have the opportunity to read. So, I mean, that passion has come out in our, in our work with, with our teachers. And, and it's good to know that they are very conscientious about, you know, putting forward, you know, books and novels that are important for our students. So, much appreciated to them.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay. So, the public participation then, as regards to information on the work session?
I think the teachers also with that, because that was the paper, did a really nice job of summarizing why they, like, for the people that were doing the community, that were doing the reading, why they were doing, why they wanted that book, how it was supporting the standards that they needed to reinforce. So, the teachers did a fabulous job of not just, you weren't just throwing a book, there was the rationale behind it. So, kudos to, I don't know what direction you gave them, but you did a really nice job, because it really helped give directions to whoever the community person was that was reading. And I think what it taught, and Dr. Malone said is totally right. The community is trusting those people that are in charge, and that's what I heard when I asked people if they'd be willing to do it. They said, why, we're trusting what you guys are, what they're doing, and we're not having any concerns with anything that we're seeing, so we're trusting what the new things that they're gonna bring in are gonna be similar to what they have. So, not that, I, I'm not saying that's a, nobody should be involved, but that definitely is the feedback that I was receiving also. And my, and my other question, and this isn't on the agenda, I'm gonna break it a little bit. Nothing's been said about the bicentennial, and if we don't have another, are you gonna bring this up at another board meeting?
We talked about it early on, but we also, it hasn't crossed my mind, but we can talk about it now, but...
I just know they've talked about the school involvement too, because there's over two hundred volunteers that are gonna be needed there also. And they're trying to figure out ways to connect with the school. I talked with Jimmy today about connecting with NJHS, and I connected with Gil Dauber to talk about, like, can that be used for government hours? So, the same type of thing as Borough Fest. I don't know that you can use it for the sport thing, because it's not supporting the schools. But I think that the school really needs to come behind the bicentennial also. Unfortunately, it's the same month. But as a school, I think we really need to be coming behind the bicentennial in providing that, you know, support also. And I don't know if we can give a push through an e-news or something to really show that we're behind that also.
The high school is broadcasting, and now they have signs up in that building. I personally don't think it would be right for us to use our paid to participate work money to support something with the city. I mean, that's taxpayer money being used in both directions, so... But as far as us with the sign-up sheet and things like, oh, absolutely, but the high school, I know they have a big banner up in there, because all the principals met with the people who are running the bicentennial. That is something we could do.
But they now met with people that are doing the volunteers. Volunteers are stressing, because there's two, over two hundred people needed. And I think that there's student groups that, and they're working on their side of genius to make sure that it's marked out what ages can, you know, like, if the sixteen-year-old is able to volunteer with, so if we can somehow work and figure out who the content people need to be, they're not sure who to go to.
Here's what I can tell you. Karen, Mrs. DeRosa isn't here. I sent her to meet with them, and so that we could broadcast it basically, and I'm not for sure of what she decided, or what was sent out, or anything like that. But I know she did meet, because I had people call me, and I sent them to her and said, write whatever they need, and make sure it's taken care of. And the district does pay her, so we were able to do that. But as far as a, a sign-up, I think there's been some things discussed. I think it'd be better if we just said from ten to two on a certain day, sign up, or leave it in the cafeteria the final week of school. We can do something like that, no problem.
I'll talk with her and see.
Yep. They just need some sign-up sheets in the high schools for Borough Fest, bicentennial, and see what, and see what we can get.
Thank you.
Very good. Any other comments about? Uh, okay, any items that are...
We don't need executive session.
You're not in executive session?
No, sir.
Okay. Is there a... Are you not what? Okay, so, are we adjourned?
Yeah.
We're adjourned?